Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 23rd, special meeting. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, first item.
Implication: To be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Please tell me you have pled allegiance?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Ransau.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Unruh.
President.
Chairman Dennis.
President.
Next item.
Appointments. Item A: Accept the resignation of Ben Sauceda from the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Items A and B are both resignations from the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee. Item A is the resignation of Ben Sauceda, who had been Commissioner Howell's appointment. Item B is Mr. Rob Wall, who had been in the private solid waste position. And both of them have resigned, and I would -- and we don't have the replacements yet, but that's coming in a subsequent week. So I would urge the Commission to accept both of these resignations.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Mr. How -- Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to say thank you to Ben Sauceda as my appointment on this commission. He's done a tremendous job. He has recently become a council member of the City of Park City and recently got married. And so it's reasonable at this time, he kind of reevaluates his priorities. And so he did ask to be relieved of his duties on this board, and I wanted to say thank you to his service. And so I also talked with some people at Waste Connections about Rob Wall, who's been assigned to a new position within their company but out of the area. So that's why he is stepping down. But he did serve with honor. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We would approve of the resignations of Ben Sauceda and of Rob Wall.
Second. We have a motion and a second. No discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item.
New business. Item C: Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts' regular meeting on January 18th, 2018.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We have one item to present to you this morning. That's a result of the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 18th. And this item is the SAP Maintenance Renewal for Enterprise Resource Planning. The recommendation is to accept the quote from SAP Public Services Incorporated, and this is in the amount of $460,516.17. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items Delta through India.
We have a motion.
Still move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. I was contacted yesterday by one Commissioner who's had a meeting and with a number of people who have asked us to be supportive of something, and we've gotten some language here. I'm going to read in what the language is, which, and I'm going to urge you all to vote on this one way or another, which is that Sedgwick County would support workforce training, development, and recruitment programs that help fill the advanced manufacturing workforce pipeline. And I suppose I could turn that over to Commissioner Unruh, who is more familiar with the meeting that he attended and who all else is supporting that.
Mr. Unruh, you want to address this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was at a workforce meeting last week that in attendance were representatives from Raytheon and Spirit and the Chamber and the City of Wichita and WATC and WSU and USD 259. And I don't want to leave anyone out in Sedgwick County. I represent Sedgwick County. But the whole effort was a discussion about how we -- what can we do to help develop a workforce to supply the needs of some of our manufacturing partners in the community? And although we, Sedgwick County, has a big investment in that through the National Center for Aviation Training, and we are clearly in support of it, it's not an item on our legislative agenda. And I was confronted by that. I might be too strong of a word, but it was brought to light in the meeting that everyone else there had this as the highest priority, and we didn't have it on our agenda. And I told them that our focus was to have a very tight, concise agenda this year that focused on items specifically applicable to county business. And but in spite of that, I think we should join our partners in an effort to say that we publicly and specifically support workforce training and development and recruitment programs that help fill the advanced manufacturing workforce pipeline. So Commissioners, I would move that we add this to our legislative agenda, and I know that our partners in the community would be grateful that we did that.
Thank you. I'd like to second it, but open it for discussion. Seeing no discussion? I'm sorry. Oh, Commissioner Ransau.
Well, I guess I have some concerns that had this on all of a sudden. I know we wanted to keep our thing tight, as you said. We already participate in job training at WATC, spend millions of dollars. Is there a specific bill that we're talking about? I mean, who is this for? How much is it going to cost? I guess I need some more details. I understand that Workforce Alliance is losing some money from the federal government. I think if that's the issue here, I think we need to be very cautious about trying to fill the void of the federal government. You know, there's been some studies that talks about receiving grants from the federal government and how it increases spending at the state and local levels when those grants go away, then there's an urge to fill those, which may be problematic considering the state's financial issues, which I think we may talk about. But I would like more specifics. I'm not sure we -- this is consistent with our intent to keep a small legislative agenda, particularly since we're already invested millions of dollars, and we'll continue to do so. We've supported Senate Bill 155. I think we need some more specifics, a specific bill, amount of money, something. I guess this is the -- just kind of had this pop up, and I'd like some more information. At this point, I don't really think it's necessary for us.
Thank you.
If anyone has any more information, I'd like to hear some specifics.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just think there's a lot of issues that we have not spoken to. We used to make policy position statements on dozens of things that would clarify our position should those topics come up in the legislature so that our representation there would understand what our position would be. We kind of eliminated that this year with reducing it down to just a few bullet points for items that we feel like are moving in the legislature or would potentially move towards a new law or a new provision in some statute this year. So I'm conflicted as well. I think our bullets are reserved for that type of items to be included on our platform so we can say, these are the things we want to move forward this year. I could go -- other words, someone could go write the bill. We know exactly what we're talking about and exactly what we're advocating for. This is a very generic statement. And so I guess I'd like to have us reconsider our position and say, in terms of an elevator speech or a business card with some items on it you could hand out to someone. I'd still like to keep it down to the three or four items, but I don't mind necessarily defining policy positions, and I think that's what this is. If a policy position says we support workforce development, and should something come up that somehow enhances workforce development in our community, we'd be very supportive of that. I like that idea. I don't mind having that written down somewhere that we could have it clarified, should anybody wonder what our position is. But and I think it's fine for us to do this, knowing that it was specifically requested. I'll support the motion. But I guess I'd like to see us segregate our comments into two areas. One thing is, I guess the high priorities are what we plan on getting done this year. What are the items we're actually moving forward with legislation, or writing legislation? We're lobbying actively in committees and discussing it at dinner with legislators versus things that we simply have a position stated that we feel a certain way about something should it come up. And to me, so this is kind of the second camp. Of course, we support workforce development. We shouldn't even have to say that. But we will say it. I'll support the motion. But again, I would like to see us consider adding policy statements as a second tier, if you will, of our platform. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but I hope that's what this is about. And with that, I'll support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. I just know that this is something that we are not opposed to, and it was a specific request by our community partners, which I can't think of anyone who wasn't present that has an interest in economic development and workforce development. I know that the only specific item that was talked about in this group at this time to try to accomplish this was the continuation of Senate Bill 155 and funding of that item. So as specific workforce development, economic development issues come forward, we will have an opportunity to weigh on them on an individual basis. And I appreciate the fact that I was one of the strongest opponents, that we cut our legislative agenda down to a few action items, and this is definitely a policy position statement. But I think it's important in light of our current developments and our efforts towards economic development, specifically the spirit support and our community partners are -- well, they -- I took a little heat, actually, in the meeting that it wasn't on our legislative agenda, and everyone else said that this was their highest priority item. So I just think as from our position, we should have it in our statement that we are supportive of these items. And the implication is, I think, specifically Senate Bill 155. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ransau.
Well, I think I'll oppose adding this to it. As we move forward, if specific items come up, I'd like to be made aware of them. I understand we have some friends at Workforce Alliance, but I don't want to give them a blank check, which seems like we're doing here, because not all legislation is equal. And I guess if what we're already doing isn't good enough, I'd like to hear that. I'd like to understand why, what needs to be changed. I think we're already doing plenty. So I want to make it clear that I support the efforts that are currently underway. I just don't think with the new way we're doing our legislative agenda, this is an appropriate item to add to it. I think we should address specific legislation as we go forward, like we've done in the past sometimes.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a second bite of the apple here. Just want to make sure that we're effective in our methods of communication. I can speak from experience. I think a former Senator, Michael O'Donnell, Commissioner O'Donnell probably feels the same way. You can welcome to represent your own viewpoint. But when you are handed a large wordy document, generally speaking, you kind of review the high points of that document, perhaps don't read it carefully, and it doesn't mean as much when it's very detailed. And so with that in mind, we advocated a couple of years ago to reduce our platform down to a few items that could be remembered, maybe left on someone's desk or handed to somebody in the elevator or as they happen to meet in the Capitol. And so that was a very good idea, I thought, and it was more based on what we actually are trying to move forward right now. And so that idea, by the way, I shared that with the KAC back in 2015, and they've actually adopted the same strategy. I think a number of organizations are hearing that comment, and they're utilizing a newer strategy, simply trying to limit the things they talk about when they have those short opportunities, and then have those larger policy statements still defined somewhere. Again, if we had a policy statement part of our platform, to the extent that workforce might be there, and they want to be able to say, our community supports this, or the City of Wichita supports this position, or the Sedgwick County Commission supports this position, I think to have those things defined might help some of our partners in the community. Even if we're not pushing the issue necessarily specifically with legislation and lobbying something specifically in the Capitol, having our position defined somewhat may help one of our partners. So again, I think it's important to have a place where we can define our positions so that people can even refer to what we've stated, even though it may not be on our postcard that we handed to somebody in the elevator. So also, again, I'll continue to support the motion, but I would urge us to reconsider our strategy, have a postcard with a couple of items on it that's we're moving forward right now, and have positions defined otherwise in a larger document that we don't hand out necessarily, but it's useful to someone, our lobbyists, as well as maybe our partners in the community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Further discussion? Well, I think this is a statement that we probably should have had in there to begin with. It says, again, support workforce training, development, and recruitment programs that help fill the advanced manufacturing workforce pipeline. It's kind of like mother and apple pie, actually, to some extent, but we can add this. We've got certain things in our legislative agenda that are very specific. I think we can add this down after all of our specific items and still make sure that our message goes forward that we do support economic development. So I will support the motion. There any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransau.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Hey. Commissioner O'Donnell, do you want to speak to one of the issues?
Yes, I can. Yesterday, I had the opportunity of going up to Topeka, as some other Commissioners and the Manager did. We were given a copy of an opinion editorial that went out across the state of Kansas by a lot of people in the construction industry, talking about some comments by the attorney for the school funding lawsuit. Alan Roop said that other areas of the budget are going to have to suffer to get more money for schools. What was suggested to us by President Wegel was to come up with our own platform, and similar to what we talked about in the staff meeting, was saying, hey, don't harm any of the other services that the counties or the local governments across the state provide, particularly in Sedgwick County with our mental health initiatives and our correction initiatives. That's vital. Of course, we don't want more cuts from KDOT and other transportation issues. But President Wegel and Representative Landwear both know how important the mental health is, not just to the Board of Commissioners, but also to our District Attorney and our Sheriff. So she suggested, along with Representative Landwear, that we define our own platform, our own op-ed, just to say that please hold us harmless or support us more, frankly, is what we would like, but don't harm mental health in particular.
And to clarify a little bit, this is not a legislative platform. This is more of a letter saying that we want to make sure that we don't harm essential services in Sedgwick County.
And we would have to develop this.
We haven't developed anything. We want to know if the Commissioners feel that we should move forward and then develop a letter that we could jointly sign out. Commissioner Ransau.
Well, I guess I'd like to see the details. I think we need to be realistic here. I think we're speaking out of both sides of our mouth. We have two things on our legislative agenda that have to do with subsidizing different businesses. We just added one here. We want more money for Workforce Alliance. We want a slush fund up there. But with the Supreme Court's edict, either they raise taxes again, or they have to make cuts, or they have to stand up to the Supreme Court and say, you need to respect the separation of powers. So I mean, if they're going to have to -- if they're not going to stand up to the Supreme Court and they're not going to raise taxes, something's going to have to give. And I don't like it. I think standing up to the Supreme Court respecting separation of powers is what they need to be doing, but I think it's kind of unrealistic to say that they're not going to cut anything. They have to. I think it's estimated 18 percent cut across the board is what they'd have to do. I mean, and I mean, if we're going to tell them, hey, don't cut anything, then maybe we should take off agenda items and tell them to spend more money. I mean, we can't have it both ways. So I guess those are my issues. It would depend on what the letter said, but you know, if you're going to take a stand, then I mean, it needs to be realistic, and that's what I would -- I mean, we have a true issue there with separation of powers, and are they going to raise taxes again? Allow the Supreme Court to mandate tax increases? Or I mean, so let's just be -- I think we're being inconsistent. We're saying, spend more money here, spend more money there, but don't cut here. I know we have two former legislators. You can't have it both ways. It's nice to say that. So I think we need to be careful and evaluate exactly what we believe here. Are we going to be physically responsible, or are we just going to wish for everything and say -- I mean, we're just speaking out of both sides of our mouth. We have to be careful with that, I think, so.
Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think if we agree to send a letter that simply says that we want the current programs to be held harmless, I think I can legitimately sign that. Don't think I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth. I think there's implications in that statement that we're asking them to take a stand against a Supreme Court decision, and that's for them to decide. We want to let them know, I think, and this is a way to do it, that these programs that are currently funded are vitally important to the citizens of Sedgwick County, and we want to let them know that by way of this communication or this editorial piece or whatever we call it. So I'm going to be forward of doing that. What we have in our legislative agenda about economic development or workforce development specifically that we just talked about, primarily that goal is to, I think, is to be creative, to continue to focus on it, to not cut the programs like Senate Bill 155. And so I don't see anywhere in any of that anything about a slush fund, and I don't see anything about being inconsistent in what we want to do, but we're just letting the legislature know what's important. So I'd be in favor of going ahead with a document of some kind that we put together, and of course, we'd want to have it put together and read it before we vote on it. So that's my position.
Absolutely. We're not -- I don't think we need to vote on anything today. We just need to see if we have a consensus to move ahead and draft a letter, and once we get a letter drafted, then we can bring that back for everyone to vote on. Oh, Commissioner Ransau.
Well, if I remember right, the original draft from the economic development, I call it a slush fund. It was talked about some sort of closing fund. The numbers thrown around was there, a $20 million was the number I was told that we're wanting them to spend. So there's definitely a desire out there for that. That being said, if we're going to do a letter, rather than inferring that they take a stand, I think we should make it very clear, let's not be wishy-washy. Then if we're going to say, hey, hold us harmless, let's give them some advice on how to do that, because they're going to have to take -- they're going to have to do something controversial. Either raise taxes again, or say no to the Supreme Court, or make significant cuts. And we don't want them to make cuts. Do you want them to raise taxes, or you want us to stand up? I think we need to take a stand and be more straightforward and put it out there.
Thank you. Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to reflect on the article I think that Commissioner O'Donnell was speaking of. There's an article in other parts of the state, and apparently it did not appear locally here, as far as I understand, but the name of the article is "A Fair Share of the Pie for All Kansans." If we were supposed to -- I think what's being recommended is something along that line, that we would simply make a policy statement talking about funding for local services and local programs here that should the legislature choose to shift money from programs to something else, then it may cause unintended consequences, I guess, locally. So if people understand what we're talking about, it's a letter similar to the article that's already out there, "A Fair Share of the Pie for All Kansans." And similar to the Tyson letter that we sent out, and Commissioners did sign that, I guess I would ask people in the community to weigh in if they want us to sign the letter. I think that they ought to be able to contact us, let us know what they think. They've been given an opportunity to understand what our intention is. As a representative of my district, I hope the people, if they have an opinion whether we should or should not support a letter to the legislature in that regard, I hope that they'll speak now and let us know their opinion. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Commissioner Howell. Further discussion? Hey. Again, I echo Commissioner Howell's comments that we're not going to vote on this today. We're going to probably vote on it, I would imagine, at our next meeting, though. So any of the citizens out there that want to weigh in on this, we certainly are receptive to any kind of comments that we have on that. So with that, we won't be voting on it today. We will be taking it up at a future date. Hey. Next item.
Executive Session.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, there is a need for an executive session today, but I wanted to bring your attention that the form that I've sent out to all of the Commissioners and the management team is different than what it has been in the past. That is a result of a change in the law last year, and we've had a considerable debate internally in our office about what that law means. I requested an Attorney General opinion, which has been issued. And so I think this form captures both the letter and the spirit of the open meetings law in regard to going into executive session. I've gone over it with the Chairman pro tem, because he'll be making the motion. I wanted to explain to the Board that when you have multiple topics, as we do today, I think there is a need to very closely tie the justification for going into executive session to a particular topic. I think there needs to be a time set for that topic, and I think there needs to be a separate vote for each topic. That's my recommendation to the Board. And I think this form does that, and I've discussed it with Commissioner Unruh as he goes through it. It's a little more complicated than it used to be, but I think it's something that comports with the law, and that's why we're doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Yost.
Well, with that explanation, Mr. Chairman, I will make motions that I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 10:50 to consult with an attorney for this commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and that the executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest. Furthermore, I will move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:20 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 11:20. So with that overview, now I will read the individual motion that I move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 10:50.
Second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:20, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 11:20.
Second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
We're recessed. You know, President -- You know, all present, all members are present. I'd like to reconvene the special meeting, January 23, 2018. In accordance with Kansas law, no binding actions were taken during executive session. Anything else need to come before the board? Seeing none, we're adjourned.